Hi again. Hi, everybody.
Hey, Michelle. How are you?
Just one second, folks. clergy will be here momentarily.
No cookies this week, Ellen? Oh, no. Yeah. There you go. All right, good, good. Thank you. That's quite all right. I know, I know. Sorry, folks. Rabbi Penzer will be here shortly. You can talk amongst yourselves. She's in the garage just coming up right now. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Christopher Iannella Chamber. My name is Matt O'Malley. I am the City Council President pro tempore. Today is Wednesday, July 21, 2021, and the Boston City Council is hereby in session. Viewers can watch the council meeting live on YouTube by visiting boston.gov/city-council-tv. Madam Clerk, as we begin, will you please call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum?
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Arroyo.
President.
Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Bach.
President.
Counselor Braden.
President.
Counselor Campbell.
Here.
Counselor Edwards.
President.
Counselor Sabe George.
President.
Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Mahia.
President.
Counselor O'Malley.
Present.
And Counselor Wu.
President.
Mr. President, we have all an attendance.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm going to begin. We're going to do things a little out of order. I think we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and then hopefully our esteemed clergy member will join us. So if you, those who are able, would please stand as I lead us in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And the council will just take a one-minute recess.
Can we get the AC turned down, Mr. President?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
We're getting older.
I will gavel back in in one moment. The rabbi is on the elevator as we speak, so I appreciate that. I will sit, well, I'll wait to introduce her when she actually gets here. So just another minute, and then we'll get started. Wonderful. Welcome, Rabbi. Come on, come on up. The council is back in session. I am delighted to, this is actually a bonus invocation for me. This, according to the schedule that was set out back in January, this was the acting mayor's week to choose a clergy member, but obviously, she's no longer participating with this body. It fell to me, and I'm delighted because I've known Rabbi Barbara Penzer for my time in office. We first met, actually, through Mayor Tom Manino. He had, I believe it was his first state of the city, and I was a counselor for probably two months at the time. And we met. You gave an incredible invocation there, and I know what a special friend you have been to so many of us. Rabbi Penzer works at Temple Hillel Benay Torah on Corey Street in West Roxbury. I've had a wonderful opportunity to gauge with just so many of her, just her, 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 just, just wonderful folks there. And I want to say congregation, but I don't think that's the right, congregation. And we particularly have celebrated St. Patrick's Day, which is great for the temple in West Roxbury. We had a wonderful time with some great friends. So Rabbi Penzer, Barbara Penzer, please join us up here. Thank you for coming in person, and thank you for delivering some wonderful words, and it's great to see you. So the floor is yours.
Thank you, sir. And please forgive my delay. These times of coming out of COVID, one never knows what's going to happen, and I feel like I'm still living in a stage of experimentation. So I want to take a moment to thank God for simply being present and for giving us this opportunity to be in person. And I want to begin by thanking Counselor O'Malley. I'm so grateful that you're serving as president pro tem today so that I can thank you for your years of service. You have represented the people of District 6 with deep respect and fierce dedication, particularly to the environment, for which I'm very grateful. And it's an honor, an honor to be here. May God bless you in the work of your hands. So I'm going to begin with the essence of Jewish prayer. Shema Yisrael, Adonai Eloheinu, Adonai Echad. Listen, listen, people of Israel. The God we call Adonai is our God and is one. I've been saying this prayer since I was little. I've said it with my kids when we go to bed. It's six words that really are the essence of witness to understanding the oneness of the cosmos. To say shema is to say, not just listen, but pay attention. Pay attention to that oneness that embraces us all. And these words are not only in our daily prayer, but we're actually reading them from their source, from the Holy Torah, our holy scriptures this coming Sabbath. So they're on my mind. Pay attention that there is a profound oneness that connects us all. Pay attention to that oneness when you feel alone and disconnected. That oneness is love. Pay attention to the oneness when you feel powerful and righteous. That oneness is wisdom. Pay attention to the oneness when insurmountable divisions prevent us from hearing one another. That oneness is compassion. Pay attention to the oneness when the only voice we hear is the one inside of our heads. That oneness is humility. We reach out, we cry out to the one, to the source, to the God with a multitude of names, and we ask your help today. In these hot and humid days of summer, the troubles of our times fall heavily on us. The city of Boston is a city facing rising sea levels and unshaded streets, schools that need better ventilation, and neighborhoods that need equitable care. The needs are many, the time is short. Be courageous. And in these glorious playful days of summer, seedlings of healing and building of gratitude and renewal burst with joy through the cracks of that heaviness. Our city is a story of resilience, a story of hope and humor, a story of life after loss, a story of love. As we slowly emerge from our separateness each day, each encounter we have is a gift. This city brings us joy through its festivals and fields of play, through the bright colors of public art and public gardens. Honor that joy with gratitude. I want to share a teaching of one of my favorite teachers who comes from a town in Poland whose name no one can pronounce, Rabbi Simcha Bunim of Pshishka. Lived about 250 years ago, and he taught. Everyone should have two pockets. In one, you'll have a slip of paper that says, "For my sake, the world was created." In the other is a slip of paper that says, "I am but dust and ashes." One is for when you're feeling hopeless and alone. "For my sake" was the world created. And for when you're feeling the grandeur that blinds us, "I am but dust and ashes." We are called at one time to be bold and at another time to be humble. May these humble and noble public servants recognize the power that is a gift to you. It's bestowed for a time by the citizens of this city and by the oneness, the Creator, the Source. May these noble and humble public servants have the mercy to listen with attention and curiosity to the voices of others on this council, opening their eyes to new ways of seeing and opening our hearts to new ways of being. May the words of our mouths and the meditations of our hearts be acceptable to you, our Source, our Creator, who affirms life and demands justice and seeks peace. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you all. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Rabbi Penzer, for wonderful and inspiring and just tremendous message. It's so great to be with you in person, so thank you so much. We've already dispensed with the roll call, of course, and we had the Pledge of Allegiance a little bit early, so we're now moving on to approval of the minutes, which is our first order of business. Seeing and hearing no discussion on the matter, the chair moves to approve the minutes from the last meeting as presented. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The minutes are hereby adopted as presented. Now, moving on to communications from Her Honor, the mayor. Madam Clerk, would you please read docket 0843?
Thank you. Docket 0843, message and ordinance amending the City of Boston Municipal Code Ordinances, Chapter 10-11.4, required notice, Chapter 10, Housing Services, filed in the Office of the City Clerk on July 19, 2021.
Thank you. Docket 0843 shall be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Madam Clerk, would you please read docket 0844?
Thank you. Docket 0844, message and order for your approval in order to permit an extension of the senior citizen property tax work-off abatement, the program through fiscal year 2022, pursuant to the City of Boston Code, Chapter 12, Section 12-3.5K, filed in the Office of the City Clerk on July 19, 2021.
Docket 0844 shall be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. The chair recognizes the chair of the Committee on Government Operations, Counselor Lydia Edwards. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. It is rare that I just want to suspend and pass, but today I am going to ask to suspend and pass this particular ordinance because it is extending an already proven program that we have in the city of Boston to help many of our seniors work off their taxes. As you know, we've had this for many years, excuse me. We've had this for many years, and many of our seniors are vulnerable at this particular time. I don't know, one part of my aspect of my district where not one of the seniors hasn't reached out to me and said, "Can I get back into City Hall? Can I please start to work off my taxes? Can you please help me stay in my home?" Every single one of us as counselors know that this program works, and this is an extension of what works. And so I would prefer that we get to it and allow that our seniors get back in here. Their income insecurities that are growing since the pandemic. And I would ask my colleagues in the rare moment to suspend and pass, again, an extended proven program. There are people on the waitlist. They want to get back here to help.
Thank you. Is there, and the chair recognizes the district counselor from Dorchester. Counselor Baker, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a, just a quick question through you to Baker. I'm absolutely in support of this. I'd just like to know what the, what the, what the cap is? How much can that senior make to come off their tax, their tax roll, and can we increase that?
The chair recognizes the chair of the Committee on Government Operations, Counselor Edwards. You heard the question.
Yes, $1,500 is the workoff. With this particular extension, we cannot. It's just continuing what we want. I'm happy to revisit increasing it and also making sure it doesn't run up out of state law or other, other laws as well. But it's $1,500, and it does help a lot of people.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Any further discussion on the proposal from the chair of the Committee on Government Operations to suspend the rules and pass docket 0844? Seeing none, the chair of the Committee on Government Operations uncharacteristically seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0844. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you. Memory of Joe Chason, who was the first person to get this, so, thank you. Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker.
Aye.
Counselor Baker, aye. Counselor Bach.
Aye.
Counselor Bach, aye. Counselor Braden.
Aye.
Counselor Braden, aye. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards. Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Sabe George. Counselor Sabe George, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Mahia. Counselor Mahia, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. And Counselor Wu.
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. Mr. President, docket number 0844 has passed unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Would you please now read docket 0845?
Thank you. Docket 0845, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $1,150,000 in the form of a grant for a comprehensive inter-agency strategy that connects law enforcement, employment, education, public health, and youth development agencies to reduce youth violence in the Commonwealth. This additional funding increases the total grant of $2,300,000 over two years, awarded by the Mass Executive Office of Health and Human Services, to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund the FY22 and FY23 Safe and Successful Youth Initiative.
Thank you. Docket 0845 shall be referred to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Next up is docket 0846.
Thank you. Docket 0846, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $120,000 in the form of a grant for the Community Compact IT Grant, awarded by the Mass Executive Office of Administration of Finance, to be administered by the Department of Innovation and Technology. The grant will fund enhanced technology and configuration management that leverages artificial intelligence and machine learning.
Thank you. Docket 0846 shall be referred to the Committee on City and Neighborhood Services. Moving right along. Madam Clerk, please read 0847.
Thank you. Docket 0847, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $110,000 in the form of a grant for a one-year fellowship, awarded by the Harvard Business School, to be administered by the mayor's office. The grant will fund Leadership Fellows, the Leadership Fellows Program.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The chair recognizes Counselor Nisa Sabe George, Chair of the Committee on Education. Counselor Sabe George, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. This docket, 0847, is for $110,000, as mentioned in the docket before us, to be used for the salary of a one-year fellowship awarded by Harvard Business School. I'd like to suspend and pass this docket.
Thank you, Madam, excuse me, yeah, Madam Chair. The chair of the Committee on Education moves, or seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0847. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. Madam Clerk, please read docket 0848.
Thank you. Docket 0848, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $70,000 in the form of a grant for the FY22 Local Consumer Program, awarded by the Mass Attorney General, to be administered by the Consumer Affairs and Licensing Department. The grant will fund intake, resolution, and administration of consumer complaints and consumer outreach.
Thank you. The chair now recognizes Counselor Julia Mahia, the chair of the Committee on Small Business and Workforce Development. Chair Mahia, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Local Consumer Program is run by the Massachusetts Attorney General's Office and supports nonprofit or government agencies that handle consumer complaints in their own regions of the state where their local knowledge and community involvement enable them to provide effective assistance to consumers. Many of these programs have decades of experience assisting Massachusetts consumers. They can help with debt collection, auto repossession issues, home improvement, contract issues, and a number of other consumer affair concerns that affect Boston consumers on a daily basis. This grant is for $70,000 and would be administered by the Consumer Affairs and Licensing Department. I move that we suspend the rules and accept this grant.
Thank you very much. Counselor Julia Mahia, who's the chair of the Committee on Small Business and Workforce Development, seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0848. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0848 has passed. Madam Clerk, now please read docket 0849.
Docket 0849, message and order for your approval of the receipt of a preservation restriction agreement on the, on the 41 Melrose Street, Boston, Mass. 02116, by the Society for the Preservation of New England Antiquities, Doing Business as Historic New England.
Thank you very much. Docket 0849 shall be referred to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Up next, docket 0850.
Docket 0850, message and order for the confirmation of the appointment of Reverend Mariama White Hammond as a member of the Boston Parks Commission of the City of Boston for a term co-terminus with the acting mayor, filing the term, I'm sorry, filling the term of Christopher Cook, who had stepped down.
The chair recognizes Counselor Michelle Wu, Chair of the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Chair Wu, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like also, in some ways unusually for the council, to waive our right to have a hearing on this appointment. Not only is the reverend well-qualified to serve in this role as a community leader and expert in climate justice and issues, but it is customary for the cabinet chief in this role to be on that commission as well. So this is about filling that role and not adding more delay. So I would like to request suspension and passage of this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Counselor Wu, Chair of the Committee, excuse me, of Planning, Development, and Transportation, seeks suspension of the rules and confirmation of docket 0850. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The confirmation stands. Thank you, Chair Wu. Moving on to reports of public officers and others. Madam Clerk, could you please read dockets 0851 through 0856?
Thank you. Docket 0846, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $120,000 in the form of a grant for the Community Compact IT Grant.
I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, I think. Docket 0851?
Yes.
Quite all right. Through 0856.
I'm rereading.
Want to make sure we get it right. Thank you.
Thank you for what you.
No, not at all.
Thank you, Mr. President. Docket 0851, communication was received from Tim Davis, Deputy Director of the Policy Development and Research Division, regarding the submission of the report of the ordinance allowing short-term residential rentals in the city of Boston. Docket number 05A2, notice is received from the acting mayor of the appointment of Maureen Gasso as First Collector Treasurer, effective August 2, 2021. Docket 0853, communication was received from the acting mayor regarding the resignation of the Boston Parks Commissioner, Christopher Cook. Docket number 0854, notice is received from the City Clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the City Council at its meeting of June 16, 2021. Docket number 0855, notice is received from the City Clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the City Council at its meeting of June 23, 2021. And docket number 0856, notice is received from the City Clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the City Council at its meeting of June 30, 2021.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Dockets 0851, 0852, 0853, 0854, 0855, and 0856 shall be placed on file. Madam Clerk, would you please read docket 0857?
Thank you. Docket 0857, the constable bonds of the following have been duly approved by the Collector Treasurer were received: Linda Castagnagna, Anthony Chillo, Emery Flaherty, David Johnson, Natalia Lovasco, Rosalinda Medence, Amalie Montero, Kawanya Morris Williams, Laquanda Murdo Francis, Yvette, I'm sorry, Yvonne Mylett, Shane Reed, Teshetta Stevens Weston, Yolanda Stinson Tubbs, and Bara Fidal Mohammed.
The chair now recognizes Counselor Andrea Campbell, the chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Chair Campbell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Wanted to, as Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, seeks suspension of the rules and approval of these constables under the usual terms and conditions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Chair Andrea Campbell, Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, seeks approval of docket 0857 under the usual terms and conditions. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. And docket 0857 has been approved under the usual terms and conditions. Moving right along to reports of committee. Moving right along to reports of committees. Madam Clerk, would you please read docket 0762?
Thank you. Docket 0762, the Committee on Housing and Community Development, to which is referred on June 16, 2021, docket number 0762, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $30,92,991 in the form of a grant, emergency rental assistance known as ERA-2, awarded by the United States Department of Treasury, to be administered by the Department of Neighborhood Development, submits a report recommending the order ought to pass.
The Chair now recognizes Counselor Lydia Edwards, Chair of the Committee on Housing and Community Development. Chair Edwards, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. I want to thank my colleagues, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Braden, Counselor Wu, Counselor Sabe George, for attending the hearing on the $30 million that is proposed to come back out to the community. I also want to thank the administration, Tim Davis, Deputy Director of Policy and Development and Research, Taylor Kane, Director of Housing Innovation Lab, and Catherine Ford, Katie Ford, who is with the Office of Housing Stability. They made an excellent presentation. They provided us with a PowerPoint really showing how this is going to only further try and stabilize the many households in the city of Boston. This is their continued transparency with the money that they've been getting for the past over 16 months and demonstrating, down to the neighborhood level, the average amount and the average requests. I will say that they were extremely excited to be able to talk about how they've actually perfected the giving out of the money. They've gotten rid of a lot of the headaches and issues that we had when we first began giving out this kind of money for rent assistance. One question that we are still going to be looking for, and I think we as a body should still be monitoring, is when the money dries up and the rent assistance and the needs are still there. And I think that's something that we all agree is something that's going to happen. So they're going to work on whether they're going to decrease the amount that they give to individuals so that there's more money left, but we are going to leave it in their good hands, is my point. And I am moving to suspend and pass to get this money to their good hands to get out to the people of Boston. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on docket 0762? Seeing none, Counselor Lydia Edwards seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0762. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket 0762 has passed. Madam Clerk, would you please read docket 0473?
Thank you. Docket 0473, the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, to which is referred on March 31, 2021, docket number 0473, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expand an amount of $330,000 in the form of a grant for the FY21 State Traffic Safety Information System Improvements Grant awarded by the U.S. Department of Transportation, passed through the Mass. Executive Office of Public Safety, to be administered by the Police Department, submits a report recommending the order ought to pass.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Could I also prevail upon you to read docket 0631? While they are different grants, I think the committee chair is going to speak on both together.
Thank you. Docket 0631, the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, to which is referred on May 5, 2021, docket number 0631, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $1,750,000 in the form of a grant for the FY21 BFD State Training Program awarded by the Massachusetts Department of Fire Services to be administered by the Boston Fire Department, submits a report recommending the order ought to pass.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Chair now recognizes Counselor Andrea Campbell, Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Counselor Campbell, the floor is yours on docket 0473 as well as docket 0631.
Thank you, Counsel O'Malley, and also thank you, Madam Clerk. These matters were sponsored by the administration and referred to the committee on March 31 and May 5, respectively. The committee held a hearing on Thursday, July 1, and I want to thank Counselor Flynn and Counselor Sabe George for attending and the folks from the administration. We had Sheila Smith, who's the program manager for the Police Department, Maria Chevers, who runs the Office of Research and Development, Kathleen Judge, who is from the Fire Department. She is the Commissioner of Administration and Finance. They gave a committee breakdown and overview of how the monies were planned to be used, specifically for docket 0473, the funds which is $330,000 will fund improved reporting, and electronic reporting in particular, of collisions and incidents in Boston, which would make it a lot easier for our department to coordinate with the state because right now, a lot of it is still via paper. And so this raises the current rate of 7% to 70% over the next six months, which would allow them to actually be able to send this data to the state. Maria also talked about how this will help with storing and retrieving traffic data and make it more easier, make it easier to, I can't find my words, make it easier to manage records. Specifically for docket 0631, Kathleen testified that this grant, which we've received before, specifically funds fire training for firefighters, instructors on training, functional skill tests, EMT training as well, water rescue, and other academic activities. The state supplements this funding for the city. They're always actually pushing for more. It also includes the cost of materials. It's a grant that we often seek out and we continue to get, and of course, they're looking always for more resources. So as Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, seeking passage of these two dockets. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Campbell. So Counselor Campbell, Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage first of docket 0473. We will, of course, vote on these separately. Docket 473 is the $330,000 grant. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket 0473 has passed. The committee chair calls for acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0631. This is the $1.7 million grant for the Fire Department State Training Program. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket 0631 has passed as well. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, would you please now read docket 0809?
Thank you. Docket 0809, the Committee on Ways and Means, to which is referred on June 23, 2021, docket number 0809, message and order approving appropriation order in the amount of $91,270,000 for the purpose of paying costs of designing, construction, equipping, and furnishing of the new building costs for the William E. Carter School, that is to be built on the site of its current location at 396 North Hampton Street in the city of Boston, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto, and for which the city of Boston may be eligible for a grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, known as the MSBA. Said amount to be expended under the direction of the Public Facilities Department on behalf of the Boston Public Schools submits a report recommending the order ought to be read for the first time and assigned for further action.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Chair now recognizes Counselor Kenzie Bach, who is the Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means. Chair Bach, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. On Tuesday, July 13, we held a hearing on this docket, and I'm very grateful to Counselor Flynn, Counselor Sabe George, and yourself, Mr. President, for attending. As I think many folks know, the Carter School, which serves many of our students with special needs, really is in a building that's, you know, was supposed to be a temporary building 50 years ago, is not in any ways fit to the purpose. And even though it's a wonderful school community, and we are honored to hear from Principal O'Connor, like, they need a much better facility. And the very good news is that this city, in partnership with the Massachusetts School Building Authority, is pursuing getting them that state-of-the-art new building. So we, as I said, we heard from the principal, we heard from Nate Cooter, the CFO at BPS, from Carrie Griffin, the Director of our Public Facilities Department, and a number of members of the project team. We got to review the project plans in detail. It's really exciting. It's actually going to expand the school such that it is going to be able to serve folks all the way from kindergarten up through when services end at 22. So it's, we're going to have 60 seats in the end instead of 25. It's going to be pretty transformational, and it was just, it was very heartening to think that the city of Boston would be dedicating so many resources in partnership with the state to really giving these students a state-of-the-art learning environment. We talked about everything from, you know, air filtration to the types of sort of like extra-wide hallways and entrance areas and such that you need for students, many of whom are using wheelchairs. And there's also going to be an adaptive pool facility inside of the building, which is something that our students don't have access to today. The reality is that we send many students who could, will benefit in the future from this type of facility, out to day programs around the region because we don't have enough capacity of this type here in Boston. So I think it's a really, it's a really serious major investment in serving those students and families. So it was an exciting thing to see. There, as folks will remember, this, in a minute, I'll say the magic words and formally ask, but we'll, I'll be asking for a vote today on this because it's a capital docket. We will be voting again on it. I'll, I expect to ask for that second vote at the August meeting. There are a few details that we are still waiting to get because the MSBA has a formal meeting with the project team in the first week of August that will give us a slightly more exact reading on the reimbursement rate. So I am expecting that when I come back to the Council with that, for that second vote, I'll also be letting you know about some of those follow-up details that we just don't have yet. But the thing is that because of the MSBA timeline and the importance of keeping this project on track and critically getting the state reimbursement for it, it's very important that the Council support it prior to the end of August. So today, Mr. President, as Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means, I recommend moving the listed docket from the committee to the full Council for discussion and formal action. And at that time, my recommendation to the full Council is that this matter ought to be read for the first time and assigned for further action.
Thank you. Any further discussion on docket 0809? Seeing none, Counselor Kenzie Bach, Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means, recommends that docket 0809 ought to be read for the first time. We will do a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll for the first reading of docket 0809?
Thank you, Mr. President. Docket 0809's first reading, Counselora Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselora Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker.
Aye.
Counselor Baker, aye. Counselor Bach.
Aye.
Counselor Bach, aye. Counselor Braden.
Aye.
Counselor Braden, aye. Counselor Campbell. Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards. Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Sabe George.
Yes.
Counselor Sabe George, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Mejia. Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. And Counselor Wu, yes. Mr. President, docket number 0809 has received a unanimous first reading.
Thank you. Docket 0809 has received its unanimous first reading and shall be assigned for further action. Madam Clerk, would you now please read docket 0776?
Docket 0776, the Committee on Government Operations, to which is referred on June 16, 2021, docket number 0776, petition for a special law regarding an act to restore Boston's governmentally-involved housing protection, submits a report recommending the Home Rule Petition ought to pass in an amended draft.
Thank you very much. The Chair now recognizes Counselor Lydia Edwards, Chair of the Committee on Government Operations. Chair Edwards, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Docket 0776, excuse me, docket 0776, was sponsored by Counselors Matt O'Malley, Counselor Michael Flaherty, and Counselor Kenzie Bach. It is essentially a Home Rule Petition that seeks to allow Boston to preserve and restore at-risk affordable housing at no cost to the city. This proposal applies to current or formerly HUD-subsidized housing with expiring use restrictions. This proposal would help maintain affordable, excuse me, help maintain affordable units in the city and discourage condominium conversions of these homes. There's a section-by-section analysis in this committee report, but because I know that there's three incredible cosponsors, and I unfortunately was not able to attend the entire, the entire hearing, which I know was very effective, I will say in summary, this is not rent control. This is housing stabilization where the government has already made a commitment to help people stay in their homes. This, again, is about us fulfilling our commitment to make sure that once an expiring use is done, people are not thrown out on the street, that we have a real plan for them, and that we put our money where our mouth is. So I'm going to turn it over to the incredible cosponsors and their leadership because I know it's inspired not just by, by general, the concept that we believe in housing stabilization in my district with the mercantile. I got lucky, but I know not every single building is, that is in expiring use, may be as lucky as we were. So I will turn it now over to, I believe, you, Counsel Arroyo, and I will, but again, after my colleague's speak, I will again move to pass. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair now recognizes President O'Malley. President O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. So I prepared talking points for this, but I think it's rather redundant. I just really want to speak on the heart from this. This is not the first time we've passed this through the leadership of Counsel Flaherty and others. We've actually passed this almost identical language several times before, and the fact that somehow opponents of this are suggesting that this is rent control or this is something that doesn't encapsulate what we're trying to do here is just intellectually dishonest, to put it mildly. We have a situation where we have these expiring-use buildings. There's one in my district, there's one in Counsel Braden's district, there's one in many of your districts, and this is one that's particularly personal to me. It's the Forbes Building in Jamaica Plain. It's a wonderful, vibrant, thriving community, mostly senior citizens, of older Bostonians, many who have some health issues. They've been dealing with this incredibly difficult year, as we all have, but it seems incredibly cruel that because the building is expiring use, meaning after 30 or X number of years, it's, there's a real possibility that they could be displaced. So I've got senior citizens in my district who are anxious, who are worried, who feel like they may be thrown out, and the new owner of the building has done little to assuage their concerns. The city has worked, and DND, and Sheila Dillon deserves enormous credit because she's worked with many of these building owners in the past to come up with a plan. And we thought we had a plan with this particular building, but things fell through right before Christmas time. Talk about being extra needlessly cruel. This Home Rule Petition would very simply allow for protections for these expiring use. And make no mistake about it, these, the reason why these buildings were designated as affordable is because they were often purchased for pennies on the dollar, and there was significant city and state and federal resources to these buildings to allow for these units. So it's not as though someone out of the goodness of their heart said, "We're going to indeed restrict ourselves." This was done with the agreement that we were going to provide safe, clean, wonderful housing for our most vulnerable. And it is, again, it is offensive to me that we've got an opportunity where in this little district alone, we have nearly 150 individuals, 147 units, so actually more than that because some have multiple folks in the units, couples in the units, are looking at potentially being thrown out, and that's only going to exacerbate the housing crisis we have in. This is a very, this will affect a very small number of units. It is actually quite minor in the grand scheme of things as we talk about protections for tenants, but it will allow protections for those tenants in the Forbes Building and elsewhere. Again, we've passed this before. I'm hopeful we will pass it again. Credible gratitude to Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Bach, my sponsors, cosponsors on this, and each and every one of you. I know folks have reached out to me, you know, either at the hearing or behind the scenes to see that we, ways we could advance it. There is an enormous appetite at the state legislature. We're not there yet. It's died at the state legislature before, but I can tell you Representative Nikia Legardo has pledged to move this forward. There's Republican support, there's bipartisan support of this. So again, when you have folks from the real estate industry characterize this as something it's not, it's intellectually dishonest. This is about saving people, saving our most vulnerable individuals who currently are there, who are in places. We just want to make sure they can continue to be so. So thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you again to all my colleagues, particularly the cosponsors.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Chair now recognizes the at-large Counselor from South Boston.
Thank you, Counselor, thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chairman Edwards, for recommending passage, and to my cosponsors for their partnership in this important work. And as referenced, this legislation will only apply to a specified list of governmentally-controlled buildings that were always, I repeat, always heavily subsidized. So expedient passage of this Home Rule is necessary to protect hundreds of residents that live in expiring use affordable units across the city. And every year, I have supported this during my tenure on the Council, have always supported expiring use properties and specifically their tenants, and every year, I do that in memory of someone. And so this year, and it's usually a community leader, a resident in that particular building and/or someone that has fought for safe and quality affordable housing. And this year, I do it in memory of the late, great Teresa Parks from Mission Hill, a wonderful woman who fought tirelessly in Mission Hill for, again, safe, quality, affordable housing, took on some of the giants, and we recently lost her as we adjourn in her memory. But, so I do so today. I stand here and continue to fight for the residents and the tenants of expiring use properties, and we do so today in honor of Teresa Parks. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Well said, Counsel Flaherty. The Chair now recognizes the District Counselor from Beacon Hill. Counsel Bach, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Mr. President, and thank you to the Chair and my cosponsors. I'll be brief because you've said much of what needs to be. I'll be brief because you've said much of what needs to be said. I think it's just, you know, so important to underscore that in a moment in which we are in an affordable housing crisis, that the last thing we can afford to do is to go backwards, to lose the communities where we have people anchored often, you know, for many decades, often as we've discussed with this, you know, forming language communities being critical parts of our neighborhood. I mean, that, that is the fabric of the city, and we're trying to preserve it, and we're trying to strengthen it and add units. And when we lose these expiring use units, it just takes us in the wrong direction, and it's heartbreaking in whatever neighborhood it happens in. So I really, you know, would urge counselors to join us today in passing this. And then, you know, we'll need everybody's good offices to ask our colleagues at the State House to pass it for us and, and make it a reality. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Bach. Any further discussion on docket 0776? Seeing none, the Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, Counselor Edwards, seeks acceptance of the committee report in passage of docket 0776 in an amended draft. I should note, it's a technical amendment. It's referring to the Boston Redevelopment Authority as such, not the BPDA. So that's, that's why it's an amended draft. That's the only change. All those in favor of passage, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0776 has passed. Madam Clerk, would you now please read docket 0602?
Docket 0602, the Committee on Government Operations, to which is referred on April 28th, 2021, docket number 0602. Petition for a special law regarding an act relative to early voting options for City of Boston municipal elections. Submit a report recommending the home rule petition ought to pass in a new draft.
The chair now recognizes Counselor Lydia Edwards, Chair of the Committee on Government Operations. Counselor Edwards, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Docket 0602 was sponsored by Counselor Ricardo Arroyo and referred to the committee on April 28th, 2021. The committee held a hearing on July 8th, and then the committee held a working session on July 15th. This docket essentially would allow early voting options in municipal elections. The legislation established procedures for that early voting. This is consistent with what the State House did during the pandemic, and it is also consistent with what I believe the State House just did last Friday. What this does is make it permanent, as opposed to, I still think there might be a deadline or some sort of extension with the State House new proposal that passed on Friday. So this is complimentary. This is demonstrating that we at the City of Boston know it works and would like to continue it. The fact is, during the pandemic, we actually saw an increase in voter turnout because we made it easier for folks to access voting. I want to thank the administration, especially Sabina Pomonte, Assistant Registarr of the Boston Elections Department, for participating on behalf of the administration. I want to also thank Sheryl Crawford for Mass Vote, as well as, I believe, in the working session, Tanisha Sullivan from the NWA, Boston NAACP branch. The committee discussed, again, that the city doesn't have it currently, but that we think it all makes sense, and we think that we should continue this as, in the discussion. I wanted to note that there were a summary of some amendments, most of them just technical, to make sure the language was precise and clear, that it would apply to municipal elections. Language is added, such as preliminary and/or municipal throughout, to make sure we were clear about that. Any annual or special was also added into that language. We wanted to make sure that we were referring to the declared state of emergency, had been removed because it was no longer part of that discussion. And then finally, we just had some small things changing from five to 10 for the number of business days prior to the proposed beginning of early voting. Again, this is about increasing democracy and access points to it, and I, again, recommend that this ought to pass in a new draft. Thank you.
Thank you. Did the chair want to, so, so I'm sorry, the, the lead sponsor, I, I didn't want to, don't want to put you on the spot, but before we take a vote, did you have any comments? Or you could save them for the next one, if you'd like.
So I'll just say that this is something we know works. I, I also want to give a thank you to the Chair of Government Ops for moving this quickly, considering we are on tight deadlines and things of that nature. The extension by the, the House, and I believe the Senate as well together, ends in December. So they extended it up until December, the mail-in voting. So we'd have the same kind of issue we just had, where they kicked it to June, then they kicked it to December, but they haven't made it a permanent thing yet. This, this would give some clarity, provided they pass it at the House and the Senate for, for Boston municipal elections and ensure that we have mail-in and early voting options available from here until, until. So I, I hope that folks will support that and support access to the ballot as we've seen that it works. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion on docket 0602? Seeing none, Counselor Edwards, Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, seeks acceptance of her committee report in passage of docket 0602 in a new draft. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0602 has passed. Madam Clerk, please read docket 0603.
Thank you. Docket 0603, the Committee on Government Operations, to which is referred on April 28th, 2021, docket number 0603. Petition for a special law regarding an act relative to same-day voter registration for City of Boston municipal elections. Submit a report recommending the home rule petition ought to pass in a new draft.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The chair now recognizes Counselor Lydia Edwards, Chair of the Committee on Government Operations. Chair Edwards, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Again, we had a, docket 0603 is the special law that is sponsored by Counselora Arroyo. It was referred to the committee on April 28th, and we had a hearing on July 8th, and also a hearing, a working session, again, to perfect the language, on July 15th. This would allow for election day registration to vote. And it essentially is using the same standards that we use to determine whether you're an eligible voter in the City of Boston, but we're just no longer, we're removing the deadlines for being able to register to vote and allowing a person who may have just moved into a community to walk in to their local polling place, present who they are, proof of residency, and, and sign the affidavit and vote. This is what we ask of them right now, except we have attached a deadline, and sometimes people move in after that deadline and can't vote. So I also want to thank the administration, Sabina Pomonte, Assistant Registarr from the Boston Elections Department, Sheryl Crawford from Mass Vote, and again, Tanisha Sullivan from the NWC Boston Branch for coming to discuss why this is also a good democratic way of increasing access to voting and ensuring that more people don't feel barred from voting or have unnecessary obstacles when we can vet them and allow them to vote on Election Day. This, the major difference is the State House has not taken a real stance on this quite yet. They have not passed a version of Election Day voting. And so in this sense, the City of Boston is again leading. I will just note some amendments that we had put in to make sure that we took out the word same and, and put in the word election, so that it isn't on this, it's not any day the person chooses to go and register. It's on Election Day that they would be able to register and vote at the same time. That was, that was a specific concern voiced by the registrar and the, I believe it was the Secretary of State's office, because if you have early voting and mail-in ballots and so on and so forth, and a person is registering, and then that's a lot for them to handle. So they actually think they could handle and believe it makes more sense for it to be on Election Day. It eliminates any references, again, to the early voting period, and again, puts in language preliminary or, and/or municipal elections in, in and throughout. Passage, again, would increase voter participation. It's something that makes sense, and we wouldn't be alone. I believe there's several states that actually have same-day, or excuse me, Election Day registration and voting. So again, I recommend to my colleagues that this docket ought to pass in a new draft. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The chair now recognizes the district counselor from Hyde Park, Counselor Arroyo. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. So there's 20 states that already do this. We, we are not one of them, though we should be, as the data shows that this really increases voter participation and voter engagement. Currently, if you were to, say, not be registered to vote, but you're so moved by a specific election or candidate, or you move into the City of Boston, you, you would have a deadline by which you would have had to register to vote. It wouldn't be enough for you to have, say, made up your mind or made a decision to vote in an election and then go register, say, a week before. This removes that, but it does it in a very specific way. Right now, at the House and in the Senate, there's two different versions of this. So one is same-day voter registration, which means for every early voting day that we make available, somebody could just show up, register to vote on those days, and then you, and then you move forward. This one is election day registration, which means you have to show up on the actual date of the election. So that's either the preliminary date or the general date, but the actual date of the election. The reason that that's the case is after speaking with the Secretary of State's Office, after speaking with Mr. Pomonte and the Boston Elections Department, it's, what makes this better for the election department is that they can pre-tabulate. So rather than having, in, in some cases, hundreds of thousands of votes, or 100,000-plus votes to tabulate on any one given night, it spreads out the work. But if you had early voting registration on days other than the election, they would actually have to not pre-tabulate those, all those ballots. They would actually have to hold all those ballots to then certify that somebody didn't just register to vote a week before, three weeks, three days before the election, and then move out of the City of Boston, for instance. And so making it Election Day, making it the preliminary date allows them to know this person is here today, this person lives here today, this person signed this affidavit today, went through all the proof of residency today, and so we can count this vote with all these other votes. But it, it allows them to continue to pre-tabulate the mail-in voting and the early voting that, that happens. And so that's the reason why this is Election Day registration and not for every date of early voting. That was a conscious decision to, to ensure that our election departments aren't overwhelmed and that this actually works in a way that is conducive not just to them, but to democracy. And so I hope that you will join me in supporting this and sending this to the House. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselora Arroyo. Any, the chair recognizes the at-large counselor from South Boston, Counselor Michael Flaherty. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and just through the chair to the maker, this is something, my kids love this, and all their friends in, in, in my neighborhood would love this opportunity. Just through the chair to the maker, what would, on, on Election Day, that individual shows up, what do they, what do they have to bring with them to prove that they actually live in that particular precinct and in that particular neighborhood?
Thank you. The chair now recognizes the lead sponsor, Counselor Arroyo. The floor is yours.
So it would be exactly the same as if they went to the RMV right now or went online to sign on. So they have to sign an affidavit that would essentially say, you'd have to, that affidavit has a social security or driver's license number, has a address, has a date of birth, so that we can verify that you're actually of the right age. You have to sign that under penalty. And I believe in some cases, if, so they run a check, if there's an issue with your, your license or your social security number, if there's some kind of discrepancy, they then ask for a proof of residency, which could be a bill or, or whatever you would bring, you know, any kind of government legal docket, like a passport or a license that shows where you are, if there's an issue or discrepancy on that first part. But the application for this is exactly the same as if you would apply right now online, but the difference is you do it there.
Thank you, Counselor Arroyo. Chair recognizes Counselor Flaherty.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And then for immigrants working towards citizenship, if they make the fatal mistake of voting in a municipal election, it will actually hamper their efforts to earn citizenship. What efforts does this do to make sure we're safeguarding for individuals who are living here, working here, earning and moving forward to citizenship? But then they make that mistake, and we learned this through hearings in the past where we had immigrant advocacy groups coming up, asking that we not pursue things like this because their fear would be that if someone voted in a municipal election, they will permanently bar, permanently bar themselves from, from being able to obtain citizenship. So I just want to make sure that we're, we're one, aware of that issue, and two, that we're, the safeguards are there before we do this. Through the chair.
Chair recognizes the lead sponsor, Counselor Arroyo.
Sure, happy to answer that. So one, I'd love to know what that organization was, but basically, when we're, when we're talking about people who are either here with work visas or on the road to legal citizenship, what, what we're talking, or full citizenship, rather, what we're talking about for these, the voter form, is that you would have to have a license, which you currently cannot get unless you are a citizen, and you would have to actually have and/or a social security number, which you don't get if you are just here on a work visa or any of those things. So you would not be able to actually fill that out. But furthermore, when we're talking about the process for elections and for folks who may not be actually legally allowed to vote, that is something that as somebody who has dealt with folks who are in that process of legally getting paperwork to be here for, for full citizenship rights, they're well aware of, of things like this. This is something that almost all immigration attorneys or anybody who's doing that would say, don't, don't do this, because as you said, it's a permanent bar, and it's actually criminal conduct. But there's a, the actual application should by, in and of itself, ensure that that doesn't actually happen, because they wouldn't be able to fill in specific places. And the places that they would have to fill in, if that was filled in incorrectly, would flag it, and they'd have to prove at that point what, what's going on.
Thank you. To the chair, through the maker.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Thank you, Counselor Arroyo. The chair now recognizes the Committee on Government Operations, Counselor Lydia Edwards. The floor is yours.
Thank you. And I just wanted to reiterate, actually, what my colleague had just said. When it comes, the issue with the bar is signing a document with the pains and penalties of perjury, and with the document specifically asks if you are a U.S. citizen or not. And if they say no, or they say, yeah, well, if they say no, then they, they won't be allowed to vote. They won't be allowed to vote at that moment. If they say yes, then they, and they are not a U.S. citizen, then they will be subjecting themselves to yes. But that would be for any form that they sign, where they've lied under the pains and penalties of perjury.
Great. Thank you. Any further discussion on docket 0603? Oh, I do apologize. The chair recognizes the district counselor from Matapan. Counselor Campbell, the floor is yours.
I just wanted to, because I, of course, remember that hearing and that robust discussion on how we allow immigrants, of course, to more fully participate in their government. And that came up, and there was an organization that suggested that as one potential barrier, and can let you know the organization. But I do think we can be proactive, right? We don't want to stand in the way of folks getting citizenship or going through their process. So we could, in very creative ways, of course, list that information, offer that information up before folks are filling out the forms, so it's crystal clear who's eligible and who isn't.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion on docket 0603, the Chair of the Committee on Government Operations seeks acceptance of the committee report in passage of docket 0603 in a new draft. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it. Do, the, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll on docket 0603?
Thank you. Docket 0603, Counselora Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselora Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker.
Nay.
Counselor Baker, nay. Counselor Bach.
Aye.
Counselor Bach, aye. Counselor Braden.
Aye.
Counselor Braden, aye. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Sabby George.
Yes.
Counselor Sabby George, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Mejia.
Yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes.
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. This President, Docket number 0603, has passed 11 votes in positive, in the affirmative and one vote negative.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, moving on to motions, orders, and resolutions, would you please read Docket 0858?
Docket 0858, Counselora Arroyo offered the following ordinance establishing protections of the city of Boston tree canopy.
The Chair now recognizes the District Counsel from Hyde Park. Counselor Arroyo, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to add Counselors Braden as an original co-sponsor.
She is hereby added. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is a, this would establish a tree ordinance to protect Boston's tree canopy. As I think we're all well aware, this was the, this last month was the hottest June in our recruited, recorded history in Boston, but we're continuing to have the hottest summer year after year, and we're continuing to see a deep impact of heat island impact and heat island effect. In September of 2020, the city of Boston released a tree canopy assessment that analyzed tree cover changes in the city from 2014 to 2019. When they evaluated the neighborhoods, they found that, though it was relatively stable, they found that the southern and eastern neighborhoods suffered the highest relative tree canopy losses, especially in Hyde Park, Rosendale, Mattapan, and West Roxbury. They also found that the highest losses were on residential land. This ordinance would do the following things. It would establish a tree warden to oversee enforcement of the ordinance. It would establish a senior urban forestry and landscape planner as an expert in tree matters. It would, uh, uh, tree matters, establish an urban forestry, forest, ah, forest, can't find my words.
Easy for you to say.
Urban forestry committee that will advise with respect to the management and maintenance of all existing and new trees on public grounds in ways, establish a criterion process for the removal and replacement of public shade trees, establish a tree stabilization fund until fund replacement trees and tree maintenance, and establish a criterion process for removal of city trees and private trees. And the ordinance would, of course, provide exemptions for situations in which a tree presents a health or safety hazard. And so my goal and my hope is that if we do this, we can protect our trees, we can increase our tree canopy, we can preserve the tree canopy that we already have. We know that we are in the middle of a global climate crisis, that Boston is not exempt from that, and that we are feeling the impacts of that every day. And this is also, I should note, something that has been done in other cities, in the city, in the state of Massachusetts. Cities like Somerville, Cambridge, Lexington, Newton, and Wellesley have already passed similar legislation. And so this is something I think Boston is overdue on and something that I believe will go a long way to ensuring that our green spaces and our future generations benefit from urban tree canopy and the impact that that has. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The Chair now recognizes the District Counsel from Austin-Brighton, Counselor Liz Braden. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to thank Counselor Arroyo for his initiative on this issue and also for including me as a, as a lead co-sponsor. I think the urban tree canopy is a critical part of our strategy to mitigate the impacts of climate change. You know, a mature tree, a healthy, mature tree can absorb approximately 11,000 gallons of water from the soil and releases it back into the areas of oxygen and water vapor in a single growing season. So the trees are really important to our ability to manage stormwater, ability to reduce the urban heat island effect, and also to create healthy, sustainable environments. You know, you think about a schoolyard that's just asphalt. With some tree canopy, it can be a really healthy restorative space for young people to spend their time. And so I really applaud this effort. I also, you know, put a, put a, say something as well that when we think about our formerly industrial areas, like in Alston, we're seeing a lot of new development on industrial spaces that's being redeveloped as commercial and residential. And we should be really mindfully, not only protecting what we've got, but also mindfully creating new, sustainable green space with mature trees to help mitigate the impacts of climate change. This summer has seen incredibly high temperatures, and I think this is one very doable strategy that we can do to preserve our urban tree canopy and make our city a healthy and livable space as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counsel Braden. The Chair now recognizes the District Counselor from East Boston, Counselor Edwards. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to note, I'm very excited about this conversation based on the actual census, the tree census that's going on in the reporting. My district actually is the baldest when it comes to tree canopy. East Boston being number one, and then Charlestown being, I believe, number three in the, in the entire city. And what we're finding is that it does impact the heat effect on people. It does impact the sense of beauty. What streets get trees, what streets are seen as valuable, what streets are considered part of the nicer part of the neighborhood and what are just part of a concrete kind of enclave. At the end of the day, the tree canopy discussion is about how we're going to develop a green space that's equitable and honestly, really assess and deal with the climate change and crisis that we have right now. So I'm excited about this. I look forward to the conversation. And I just wanted to note that this is going to be, I think, further complimentary to all the work, green work that you have also done, President O'Malley, when it comes to making our city more sustainable.
Thank you very much. Thank you for those remarks. Chair now rec, oh, I assume you'd like to add your name, Counsel Edwards?
Yes, please.
Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Lydia Edwards. Chair now recognizes the District Counsel from South Boston, Counselor Flynn. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, please add my name. Thank you, Counselora Arroyo and Braden. Counselor Braden and I also filed a hearing order on a similar topic but on tree removal process because we realize the importance of having a healthy tree urban canopy, yet oftentimes trees are cut down without, without much community process or notice. Residents often view trees as an integral part of that neighborhood and therefore are often alarmed and concerned when there are requests to remove healthy trees. So it's important that we have a good community process in place for tree removal and that there are measures in place to protect our tree canopy, especially as we see a lot of trees dying because of gas leaks that continue to take place across the city of Boston. Literally thousands of gas leaks, although, although they're minor in nature, they're killing our trees. I want to thank Counselora Arroyo and Braden for filing this hearing order, and I look forward to working with both of you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Flynn. Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Ed Flynn as a co-sponsor. Any further discussion on 0858? Seeing none, would any other counselors wish to add their name as a co-sponsor? Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Baker, Counselor Bach, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Savi George, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Mejia. Please add the Chair and Counsel Wu as well. Docket 0858 shall be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Madam Clerk, would you now please read Docket 0859?
Thank you. Docket 0859, Counselora Arroyo offered the following petition for a special law regarding an act directing the city of Boston Police Department to waive the maximum age requirement for police officer Daniel Flores.
Chair recognizes the District Counsel from Hyde Park. Counselor Arroyo, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Flores is a resident of Rosendale, has been a resident of our city for all of his life, over 40 years. He currently works with the Boston School Police, and before that, he worked with a youth program for 11 years. So he's worked with the school police for five years. He worked with a youth program for gang-affiliated youth for 11. Prior to that, he's applied four different times to be a member of our Boston Police Department. This is the furthest he's ever gotten. However, he was turned away because unfortunately he is three months past the age limit. And so similar to one of these that I believe Counselor Baker did earlier last year, this is just an act that, that does not make him a Boston Police Officer. This just gives him an opportunity to go through the process and to, and to have an age extension. He is somebody who is driven by his interactions with youth and wants to make sure that he's making a positive impact in our streets and in our city with other people like him. And so this is, this is something that I'm happy to, to propose and hope that we can move through at some point later this year to ensure that he can have an opportunity to achieve his dream. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Arroyo. Any further discussion on 0859? Seeing none, would any counselors wish to add their name to Docket 0859? Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Baker, Counselor Bach, Counselor Braden, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Savi George, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Mejia, Counselor Wu. And Docket 0859 shall be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Madam Clerk, would you now please read Docket 0860?
Docket 0860, Counselora Arroyo offered the following order for hearing to discuss the redistricting process for the city of Boston.
Chair now recognizes the District Counsel from Hyde Park. Counselor Arroyo, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm standing up a lot today. The census is delayed, as folks know, until September. There's a bill that just passed the House that changes sort of the order in which we do the, the redistricting process. But what I, what this hearing is for is so that we can have a public hearing prior to the release of the census, so that we can discuss sort of all the pertinent details of what the process will look like, so that folks can voice what's important to them in this process, so we can answer questions like, what's the difference between subprecincting and reprecincting and all these kinds of things in a, in a public forum, in a public space? And that will sort of give some order to the process that will then follow in the fall. And so redistricting is upon us. It is something we do every decade. It's incredibly important. And so this is just a way to make sure that any questions that any counselor may have, any member of the public may have, they're able to come and ask it in a way that doesn't say violate open meeting law and, and cause any extra confusion. So my, my hope is to have this done prior to the release of the census results, which I believe are due to release September 30th of this year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion on Docket 0860? Seeing none, would any counselors wish to add their name? Counsel will take a 30-second recess. Oh, yeah, no, I, I got that. Thank you. Counsel is back in session. Sorry for that little delay. Just a que, for those watching, just a question on the committee assignment for Docket 0860. So no further discussion, counselors wishing to add their name. Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Baker, Counselor Bach, Counselor Braden. You wish to speak on this?
Yes.
Okay, we'll get to you. We'll do, we'll get to you in one moment. I'm sorry. Just collecting names now. Counselor Campbell, Counselor Savi George, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Mejia, the Chair, Counselor Wu. And before we remand this to committee, I will call on the District Counsel from Austin-Brighton to, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. As well as the redistricting process, which is on a, sort of the bigger scale, I really feel that we have an opportunity in this moment to look at reprecincting in our, in our redistricting conversation. I think the, the last time we had new precincts drawn in the city of Boston was April of 1921. So we haven't had, our local precincts haven't been redrawn in over 100 years. So I think this is an opportune moment to try and look at, at that issue as well as the bigger issue of redistricting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm getting nods from the, the maker, so I'm sure that will be part of the discussion as well. Docket 0860 will be referred to the Committee on Census and Redistricting. Madam Clerk, would you now please read Docket 0861?
Docket 0861, Counselora Arroyo offered the following order for hearing to discuss predatory lending programs in the city of Boston.
Chair recognizes the District Counsel from Hyde Park. Counselor Arroyo, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think we've heard a lot and we all understand what homeownership means to somebody individually, but also what it means to, to generations of families in terms of stabilizing their lives and, and creating sort of generational wealth. There's another side to that, which is mortgages and what happens to folks when they, when they have problems with financial institutions or economic issues in which predatory lending programs may come in and fill up the gap. This hearing was inspired by members of my district who have come to me with a number of different things that have occurred to them and things that they are dealing with and frankly, that, that seem predatory and deserve to be studied and looked at by this counsel to ensure that when organizations exist in the city of Boston, when they deal with our residents and our constituency, that they're, they're doing what they're supposed to be doing, that they're not causing more harm, that they're not in any way, shape, or form engaging in predatory practices. And the hope for this is twofold. It's to, one, address and, and, and look at whether or not predatory lending programs are, are existing in the city of Boston and how they're operating, but it's also to provide an opportunity for those who may be having issues with their homeownership, who may be having these kinds of problems, to see what kinds of programs and resources the city of Boston has available to them, what kinds of programs and resources they should be looking for or, or seeking. Because as we all know, where you live in, in, in your own home is, is an important part of your identity and who you are. And so ensuring that we're giving folks safe outlets and informing them of what resources they have available to them while also sort of providing a disclaimer or sort of a warning on this is the kind of thing that you would only get out of predatory lending or predatory mortgages, and this is something you should be aware of. And if you have been somebody who has been taken in in that way, these are the options available to you to address that. So my hope is to address both of those things at this hearing. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion on Docket 0861? The Chair recognizes the District Counsel from East Boston, Counselor Edwards. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And I think what, what is very necessary is that we understand that just like recovery and just like the way in which we look at how we're going to rebound, many ways in which, I'm so sorry.
Right, right.
One's got a, two seconds, okay?
Take your time, take your time.
Something got caught in my throat. My apologies. As you know, that as we recover, as we think of different creative ways to come back from the housing crisis that we're in, we also need to be mindful of the ways in which oppression and scams are also being recreated consistently to take people's money and to take their housing. So I'm really excited about this hearing because I do think that there's many people who are desperate to look at a way to help, to sign up for, to get some credit option, to hopefully get rent assistance, to do all of these different things because people are desperate to stay in their homes. And I think that there are a lot, I'm really concerned about seniors, I'm concerned about people who do not speak English as a first language, I'm concerned about people being in the dire straits and making whatever decision they can make, yes, please, whatever decision they can make to try and save at a temporary moment. So I'm really excited about having a watchdog hearing, if you will. I assume that that's what it's like. And also just assessing all the lessons that we learned from the past when we did have the same issue when we were coming back from the recession. So thank you very much for this conversation. I look forward to it.
Thank you very much. The Chair now recognizes the District Counsel from Austin-Brighton, Counselor Braden. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President.
And thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do want to thank my colleague, Counselor Arroyo, for offering this, this hearing order. We have had some instances recently where we're, we're dealing with some of our residents in Austin-Brighton who have been subject to some questionable lending practices that have put their, their housing situation in dire, in a dire circumstance. So I really value the opportunity to have a, have a watchdog hearing to really look at what's happening on the ground in our neighborhoods and to really use it as a platform to try and educate our residents about when something seems slightly off, maybe it is, and that they should be careful before signing on the, signing onto a contract that will leave, put them in jeopardy going forward. So I really welcome this opportunity for this hearing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I assume you want your name added?
Yes, sir.
Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Liz Braden. Any further discussion on Docket 0861? Would any counselors wish to add their name as a co-sponsor to Docket 0861? Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Bach, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Savi George, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Mejia. Please add the Chair, Counselor Wu. And Docket 0861 will be referred to the Committee on Housing and Community Development. Moving right along to Docket 086, excuse me, that, I, that was Docket 0861 will be referred to the Committee on Housing and Community Development. Now moving on to Docket 0862.
Thank you. Docket 0862, Counselors Arroyo and Flynn offered the following order for hearing to discuss safety conditions in Boston public school classrooms during extreme temperatures.
Chair recognizes the District Counsel from Hyde Park. Counselor Arroyo, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is an issue that's near and dear to me as somebody who both went to Boston Public Schools and also attended summer school a couple times. And so I'm very aware of the extreme heat temperatures that we may get at times within our, our facilities. The reality is this is a serious matter in the sense that when you are trying to, say, take an MCAS exam and your classroom is 85 or 90 degrees, there's a real impact that has on somebody's ability to focus, on somebody's ability to make it through that program. And it's an unfair disadvantage when we, when we put our children in a situation where the temperatures are beyond an acceptable realm. DESI, which is Department, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, actually has a requirement that when temperatures, that a temperature in a classroom not fall below 68 degrees or rise above the temperature of 80 degrees. However, they only allow heat-related half-days as long as the schools meet the required amount of student learning time for the year. And so when we're talking about putting children into conditions that we would not allow in other circumstances, classrooms that are above 80 degrees or below 68 degrees, and in, in some cases jeopardizing their health, but certainly creating an uncomfortable environment for them to learn and to be engaged in their, in their learning and their processes to advance themselves. That's a responsibility that we should take really seriously as a city to ensure that we're not allowing that to happen. And so this is a hearing to ensure that we're figuring out, one, how widespread is this a problem, and, two, what are the steps we're taking to address it? If I had the ability to mandate that a classroom not be used for, when it's above these numbers, I would do that. I don't, none of us do. It belongs to DESI. And so the question is, what is, what is BPS doing when we get to a classroom that's 83, 85, 90 degrees or a classroom that's 60 or 50-some degrees? 90 degrees, or a classroom that's 60 or 50-some degrees? What are we doing to ensure that they're not spending that time in that learning room and ensuring their safety and their health? Because it is a responsibility, when a kid gets on a bus or a kid gets dropped off at school, that parent is entrusting them with their child and their health and safety of that child. And if there's certain schools that are not going to have those issues and some schools that do, then we're creating inequity within our own system. But more importantly, we're creating real dangers to their health and real dangers to their ability to learn and retain information and do the things that we want them to do to be successful. And so I look forward to going into this. I appreciate the partnership with Councilor Ed Flynn on this, and I look forward to seeing what exactly the city intends to do moving forward to address this issue in a long-term, sustainable way. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Chair now recognizes the cosponsor and district council from South Boston, Councilor Flynn. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to Councilor Arroyo for including me on this important discussion about HVAC and air conditions and heating in our classroom. In June, I sent a letter, a formal letter, to the BPS superintendent when it was, we had extreme heat. Many of our schools' kids were taking the MCAS and the classrooms were 95 degrees. And I asked, what are we doing as it relates to students that are in that situation? I think it's an important issue, and it's an important issue that we get answers from. Just want to quickly respond to Councilor Arroyo because I would like to ask BPS to provide us before the meeting with the list of schools that don't have the proper HVAC systems in place or the proper heating systems in place before our meeting, so we know exactly what the data is before we have our council meeting, and asking them to make recommendations on how we're going to address this situation. And finally, Mr. President, I just wanted to add, with the hundreds of millions of dollars this school department is receiving from the federal government, in my opinion, there's really zero excuses for not ensuring that our kids study in a healthy environment.
I did.
That's important to me, that's important to all of the parents, certainly it's important to this council body, but we must demand that our students are studying in a proper environment, especially when we were given hundreds of million dollars from the federal government. So those are some of the questions I'm going to be asking at the council meeting, council hearing. Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to Councilor Arroyo for including me.
Thank you, Counselor Flynn. The chair now recognizes the district council from Alston Brighton, Councilor Liz Braden. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank the makers for this hearing order. You know, I think we've talked already about climate change in this hearing today. The reality is that climate change is a reality. It's here, and we expect that we will experience periods of extreme heat outside the regular school year in May and September. And as a physical therapist who has worked in a special, with special needs population, I also am very cognizant of the fact that many of our students with special needs have, are particularly vulnerable because they have heat regulation challenges, and they're not able to regulate their heat in the same way as a typically developing student. So, you know, I think this has very deep and profound impacts on our ability of our school students to participate in the school, in their education, and to be healthy and safe in their school environment. So I applaud the makers for this, and please add my name. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Liz Braden as a cosponsor. Any further discussion on 080 -- excuse me, 0862? Seeing none, would any councilors wish to add their name as a cosponsor? Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Bach, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Sibby George, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Mejia. Please add the chair, Counselor Wu as well. And docket 0862 shall be referred to the Committee on Education. And Madam Clerk, I also wanted to note, apologies if I neglected to say, Counselor Campbell was also a cosponsor on docket 0861. Okay? Moving right along to docket 0863.
Docket 0863, Councilor Flynn offered the following order for hearing to discuss pest control and illegal dumping in the city of Boston.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The chair now recognizes the district council from South Boston, Councilor Ed Flynn. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, may I suspend Rule 12 and add Councilors Edwards and Braden as original cosponsors?
Seeing no objection to the suspension of Rule 12, Councilors Lydia -- Councilor Edwards and Councilor Liz Braden are hereby added as original cosponsors to docket 0863. Please proceed, Counselor Flynn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, this is basically a refile from last year. Last year, I had a hearing on this exact topic, illegal dumping and pest control. But the issue of rodents and illegal dumping still persist. It's important that we continue our discussion on how we can curb rodent activity and illegal dumping. This morning, I started my day at Villa Victoria, and that was the first question I received was about illegal dumping and rodent control. I was in South Boston as well, and a resident stopped me on the corner of Dorchester Street and Silver Street. They asked me also about illegal dumping. Last night, I was in Chinatown, the same situation. This past year, there has been an increase in rodent activity across all of the neighborhoods. We have had neighbors reach out to us and to my colleagues, talking about the uptick in pest activities. Last year, the CDC has warned that environmental health and rodent control agencies should expect reports of unusual or aggressive rodent behavior due to the closing of restaurants and other food services, sources I should say, for rats and rodents closing down during pandemic. However, as restaurants are opening up again, residents still see an uptick in rodent activity. We should also talk about illegal dumping when discussing rodent control as well. We're seeing that across the city, including many construction sites that are throwing their construction debris right in someone's sidewalk. It's having a quality-of-life issue. It's having a major impact on many people that need to cross and walk on our sidewalks, especially our seniors and persons with disabilities. It also presents an opportunity for rats to get into the trash and to cause other challenges that we have as well. So I'm filing this hearing order to discuss ways how we continue to be proactive during these challenges. I want to highlight the excellent work of the Public Works Department and Inspeccional Services on these issues. These issues aren't going away. We're not able to solve them, but we need to be proactive in dealing with them. They're quality-of-life issues. They're impacting every resident in every neighborhood. So it's important we talk about these bread-and-butter issues because they affect everybody. If we can't deal with these issues, we can't deal with the big issues of the city. So my focus is on the nuts and bolts of city government, and I'm glad to partner with my council colleagues on these as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Counselor Flynn, the chair now recognizes the district council from East Boston, Councilor Edwards. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much. I echo every -- first of all, I want to thank you, Counselor Flynn, for allowing me to be a cosponsor. I think what we have, I have in my district, often dealt with pest control issues predominantly in the North End because we have the single largest concentration of restaurants. And so as a result, we have a lot of street trash, and we have a lot of concentration that results in, unfortunately, a lot of pests. But what we're seeing is an uptake in East Boston that we've never seen before, the amount of rats that we're seeing on the streets and coming out. And I think it has a lot to do with development. Development and the lack of abatement, or I wouldn't say lack of, but not enough abatement and requirements for developers to step it up in a huge way. It's because we're going into traditional places where a lot of the rats have had their nests or pests have been, and we're digging them up, and they're going to find another place to live. And so what we need to do is make sure that developers at the permitting process have a robust plan that the city is looking at, because I think it takes all hands to be part of this conversation. So we did discuss this. I will give credit where credit's due to Chris Osgood when we discussed this during the budget and how we wanted to make sure that abatement was part of the conversation. Also spoke with Chris English, again, from ISD. I really do hope at some point we can discuss how this is connected to the permits and making sure there's robust abatement plans to keep, for the developers to be held accountable for keeping the rodent population down. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Edwards. The chair now recognizes the district council from Alston Brighton, Councilor Braden. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank the maker, Counselor Flynn, for your initiative on this important issue and for including me as an original cosponsor. You know, the prevalence of rats and rodents is well-known across our city, but in Alston Brighton, you know, Alston's called Rat City for good reason, and I think it is an ongoing concern. We hear multiple, we have multiple calls every day about rats and issues with rodent concerns from our residents in the district. I also want to appreciate the work, great work of our works at the Inspeccial Services Department and Department of Public Works. You know, I had a, I called it a rat safari with Leo Boucher last year when he took me on a walk around the district to follow up on some complaints, and I got a firsthand education about the concerns and the things to look for. So there's a piece of that is really important, is public education about how to help mitigate the impacts of rodent control. But, you know, it is really a huge issue in my district. I also want to echo Counselor Edwards' concerns about the need for adequate abatement with regard to construction sites. We are seeing a lot of construction in Alston Brighton, and combined with the prevalence of, you know, a lot, high density of restaurants, you know, it's sort of a perfect storm in terms of our rodent, explosion of our rodent population. So I really look forward to the ongoing conversation. We began this conversation last year. The problem isn't getting any better, it's getting worse, and I look forward to the upcoming hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Braden. The chair now recognizes the at-large council from South Boston, Councilor Michael Flaherty. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Please add my name, as we know, or at least from my colleagues' identification, Boston is home of the Norwegian rat. Over the years, it's actually built up a tolerance to the bait that goes into the sewers and what have you. So I would ask that, through the makers, that they insist that dry ice, which obviously is the most effective and most humane way to solve this problem, is a part of the equation. Developers should be being held to that standard when they're coming in and either tearing down buildings or doing significant construction projects, disrupting things underground. But also, to the previous speaker, Leo Boucher is no longer with Inspeccial Services Department. He's been, he's moved over to the Parks Department. So I know that there's a void there in rodent control. We probably have arguably one of the best rodent control divisions in the country, and coupled with private extermination companies, et cetera, they could have worked hand-in-hand. But we had an opportunity, obviously, through the pandemic, I think, because of the closures, and we saw the rat population coming out in search of new food sources, should have been the opportunity where we pounced on it with the dry ice. And instead, I think we sort of, we kind of maybe played a little defense instead of going on the offense, and as a result of which, we're now seeing explosion of the Norwegian rat population that is, it's causing significant issues and quality-of-life issues, particularly across the city. So again, please add my name, and I just, if we want to have a fruitful discussion, if we want to put a dent in the effort against the Norwegian rat, dry ice has to be front and center from the opening remarks of this body. Thank you.
Well said, and I was seeing nods of agreement from the cosponsors with your remarks, so thank you for that, Counselor Flaherty. Madam Clerk, please add Council Michael Flaherty's name. The chair now recognizes the district council from Dorchester, Councilor Baker. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Got a rat complaint last night at 11:45. Someone texted to me. So something that I've been dealing with in my district for 10 years, Liz touched on it a bit, education. A rat lives within 300 feet, so they need all their needs. They need their water, they need their food, and that education piece covers on the barrels. You know, if there's water here, dump that out, put your bags in the trash. A lot of it is education. You're only as good as your next-door neighbors, so it's an education for entire neighborhoods. It seems like when you get in front of it, six months later, it's back. I honestly don't know what to do. I'm glad you brought up the dry ice. I believe we were prohibited, and I'm not sure why we were prohibited from using the dry ice. I think it was the Environmental Department. I'm not quite sure, but I'd love to touch on that. It seems to be the most effective. The dry ice puts carbon monoxide into their dens and kills them in the den, so.
Thank you.
Just a little clarification.
No, I appreciate that. I assume you want your --
I got some rat experience, two-legged and four-legged.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Baker. I assume you want your name added?
Yes.
Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Frank Baker as a cosponsor. Any further discussion on docket 0864? Seeing none, would any councilors wish to add their name as a cosponsor? Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Bach, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Sibby George. We've already added Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Mejia. Please add the chair, Counselor Wu. And docket 0863 will be referred to the Committee on City and Neighborhood Services. Madam Clerk, would you now please read docket 0864?
Docket 0864, Councilor Mejia offered the following resolution in support of Colombians and Colombian-Americans urging the federal government to safeguard the exercise of democracy in Colombia.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The chair now recognizes Counsel Julia Mejia, the at-large council from Dorchester. Counsel Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to add Counselor Arroyo as an original cosponsor.
Counsel Arroyo is hereby added as an original cosponsor to 0864. Please proceed.
Thank you. I remember coming to the U.S. from the Dominican Republic when I was five years old. I came to Boston during the height of the busing era, at a time of massive protest, and it seems like ever since then, the protests have not stopped. The right to protest is a fundamental part of Boston's history, and we have an obligation as elected officials to protect the right, that right, both within the city and outside. As some of you may know, since April, people from all backgrounds across Colombia have been protesting their government's proposed tax reform laws. The government has responded to these protests with shootings, detention, disappearances, gender and sexual-based violence, and more. Independent Human Rights Watch organizations have identified at least 4,687 violent acts committed by the police and armed forces against protesters. Afro-Latinos, women, and members of the working class are being especially targeted. What's happening in Colombia is wrong, but what is worse is that our tax dollars are being used to help militarize the Colombian police. In 2020, our federal government approved around $448 million to aid Colombia, nearly half of which was spent on military policing and other programs which have directly impacted ongoing protests in Colombia. That's our money being placed into the hands of people who are causing harm to their own people. We may not have much power as a body to impact the situation directly in Colombia, but we can certainly use our power to urge the federal government to support all people's rights to democracy and protest. We can't, in good faith, be proud of our First Amendment right to protest while also supporting policing tactics that silence protests. I want to close on this, speaking out against what is going on in Colombia. It is an important opportunity for us to reflect on how we respond to protest. I just mentioned that we cannot be proud of our First Amendment rights to protest if we support tactics that silence protest. This applies to us right here in Boston as well. We need to take a close look at how we, as a government, respond to protests in our city and ask ourselves if we are staying true to our commitment to respect the voices of all people. That's why we need to ban chemical weapons and rubber bullets, and it is why we have passed a resolution urging the MBTA to stay open during protest. We have a lot of work to do to stay open during protest and to ensure that protests are safe, accessible, and effective. And while we continue to advocate for this abroad, we need to just, we need to fight just as hard to advocate here at home as well. I move to suspend the rules and pass this resolution.
Thank you very much. Chair now recognizes the district council from Hyde Park, Councilor Arroyo. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll keep it brief because I believe Counselor Mejia did an excellent job summarizing that. As cosponsor of this, I think it's really important that our tax dollars never go towards funding human rights abuses. The values that we treasure here in our country, freedom of speech, the freedom to assemble, the freedom to not have human abuses, human rights abuses perpetrated on you for political purpose or at all, are the kinds of values that should be directing where we send our money. And it's for that reason that I stand on this, that I support Counselor Mejia, his efforts here. And I would also say that my thoughts are here in Boston with those who have family. We do have a Colombian population. Yesterday was their Independence Day. I believe yesterday was also their flag raising. We do have a relatively large Colombian population, immigrant population, that is feeling the effects of what's happening at home, and it is incredibly sad that any of that violence may be perpetrated with some of our assistance in the sense that we have assisted in funding some of that. And so I pray for a peaceful solution and a peaceful end to what is happening there, and I hope that as we decide at a federal level where money goes, we do so, leading with the values that we strive to achieve here at home. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion on docket 0864? Seeing none, would any councilors wish to add their name as a cosponsor to docket 0864? Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Bach, Counselor Braden, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Sibby George, Counselor Flaherty. Please add the chair. Please add Counselor Wu. And Councilors Mejia and Arroyo seek suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0864. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the docket is adopted. Madam Clerk, would you now please read docket 0865?
Thank you. Docket 0865, Councilor Mejia offered the following resolution urging action in Massachusetts State Legislature to uphold the values of transparency and accessibility to the people's business.
Thank you. The chair recognizes the at-large council from Dorchester. Counsel Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. We're still in our first term as an office, and throughout our first term, we've been learning how to navigate all the rules of the open-meeting law. For those who are listening and who do not know, the open-meeting laws is a set of rules that require us as a body to conduct as much of our business out in the open as possible to ensure the public can take part. This means that all public meetings must be noticed at least 48 hours This means that all public meetings must be noticed at least 48 hours before it happens, giving us a little bit of time to make sure that the voices of the people are heard in these spaces. As an office, we have also worked to make sure that we are being open and transparent about everything we do. We post videos, infographics, explaining new information that we're learning so that people can learn alongside us. And we've always pushed to make sure that it's not just the same usual suspects in the room. In short, we're passionate about government accountability and transparency, and we know that people from all levels of government feel the same way. Recently, a move to improve transparency in the State House made its way to the floor. Advocates and elected officials were pushing to make commitment votes public and to ensure that there were at least 48 hours between an amendment being introduced and being voted on both, on both, on, period. Everyone's having an issue here with their reading today. Both of these initiatives failed. While we're disappointed in these efforts, we know that the fight for greater accountability and transparency is not over. This isn't about calling people out, but rather calling them in. Advocacy organizations like Act On Mass are continuing the work of making sure that all government businesses, that all government business is accessible to the people. And while we push for greater transparency in the State House, we should also be looking at our body to make sure that we're doing everything possible to make sure we're not just creating space for people, but we're, we are directly involving them in every part of our work. My move, that we suspend the rules and pass this resolution.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion on docket 0865? Would any councilors wish to add their name to docket 0865? Madam Clerk, please add Council Arroyo, Council Braden, Council Campbell, Council Edwards, Council SIB George, Council Flaherty, please add the Chair, please add Council Wu, and Council Mejia seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0865. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket 0865 has passed. Madam Clerk, would you now please read docket 0866?
Thank you. Docket 0866, Councilors, excuse me, Councilors SIB George and Campbell offer the following resolution, recognizing July as BIPOC Mental Health Awareness Month.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Chair now recognizes the At-Large Counsel from Dorchester, Council Anissa SIB George. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'm pleased to once again file this resolution declaring July as BIPOC Mental Health Awareness Month with Council Campbell. Our resolution highlights some of the continued racial disparities when it comes to accessing mental health care. I'd like to read some troubling statistics. 2.7 million Asian-American Pacific Islanders have a mental health or a substance use disorder. Only 1 in 20 Latinos with a mental health disorder are able to receive services from a mental health specialist. Nearly 1/3 of Muslim Americans perceive discrimination in a healthcare setting. Only 1 in 3 Black Americans who need mental health care receive it, and Black Americans with mental health conditions are more likely to be incarcerated than people of other races. This last May, I also filed a resolution on the importance of supporting people of color working to become mental health care providers themselves. Along the way, they face systemic racism and cultural stigma around mental health. But it is clear from these statistics that there is an overwhelming need to have more practitioners of color working with clients of color. Studies have shown that when clients are matched with providers from the same background or who speak the same language, the clients stay in treatment longer and experience greater benefits than those who are not matched. There are community-wide ripple effects to increasing the number of BIPOC practitioners, including that more people of color will seek out care when they need it. No matter a person's race or cultural background, everyone has to contend with their own mental health, and we should be able to do so free from discrimination, from incarceration, and from systemic barriers that make it unnecessarily hard to access the care we all need. I know that many of us on our, on this body have struggled with our own mental well-being or have had family members who are actively struggling today. It is important that we, as a body, are considerate of each other, our family's struggles, and the struggles of so many Bostonians trying to get a handle on their mental well-being. I ask that we suspend and pass this resolution and redouble our efforts to improve access to mental health care for all of our residents. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Counsel. The Chair now recognizes the co-sponsor, the District Counsel from Matapan, Council Andrea Campbell. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Council SIB George, for the continued partnership on this very important issue. And I won't repeat the stats, they're crystal clear, but I think we also recognize, coming out of COVID, and obviously, there's light at the end of the tunnel, but all of us, regardless, of course, of your demographics, suffered a great deal. And so I have actually been really proud to partner with Council SIB George and Council Mejia in pushing the city, of course, to use a mental health lens when responding to issues for greater investments. And that's what it is. The city of Boston can do so much more. This month, of course, recognizes the hard work of those in community, our healthcare providers, and of course, those in our city departments who are doing this work, but also pushes us to really be reflective on what else we could do. And it does mean making sure every resident, for example, has access to a primary care physician. It's proven that when you do that, you're more likely to actually seek out mental health services. We can do that in the city of Boston. In addition, making sure that providers of color, and there are many actually in community doing incredible work, have resources, have access to more human capital and technical assistance to navigate some grant processes in order to get more funding. It also means, of course, being really intentional in our response to mental health, making sure our own city departments have adequate staff to respond, and more resources to help residents navigate all of the resources and services that actually are available to them, including right in our neighborhoods, right at our community-based health centers. And of course, it requires us to invest more in our community-based health centers, and so much more. The providers are fully aware of what we can do. They have been doing this work in partnership for a really long time. So again, grateful to Council SIB, Council Anissa SIB George for the continued partnership for creating the space for providers to come together, and for particularly continuing to recognize the work that folks do, not just this month, but all year round on these critical issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Campbell. The Chair now recognizes the At-Large Counsel from Dorchester, Council Mejia. The floor is yours.
So I just wanted to thank my colleagues for filing this. You know, I, since being on this job, I always think about how, you know, everything is political and personal, and I always, I lead with my personal experiences in the space. And so, you know, I've mentioned the fact that my grandfather died by suicide. In one of our earlier meetings, I talked about my cousin who was a Vietnam, not Vietnam, but he was a, a war vet, I guess, a veteran, thank you, who, who died by suicide. And oftentimes, we don't address the stigma that existing communities of color. You know, I, I have, I'm not sure if I've talked about it here, but in my own adolescence, I've also attempted suicide. And, you know, my mother, who was undocumented at the time, was too afraid to take me to the hospital because she was afraid of what, of what would happen. And instead of taking me to the hospital, she made me drink oil and milk as a way for me to handle that situation. And so her, her point was, is that she was afraid, but then she also said something to me that I will never forget, that if anyone ever heard about this, that I would never be able to get a job in America. And that stigma is real. And so when we talk about issues of mental health, it's important for us to share our own journeys, because that's part of that work. And I think as we continue to move in this space and as we continue to think about COVID, we have to recognize that mental health is going to be the next pandemic that we're going to be facing, because so many people have lost loved ones and haven't been able to grieve properly. And so I just think, I'm just really grateful to you both for your leadership in this space, and just wanted to offer some remarks. And, and I'm very grateful for your work in this space. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Mejia, and thank you for sharing. That took strength. Thank you very much. Any further comments on docket 0866? Would any councilors wish to add their name? Madam Clerk, please add Council Arroyo, Council Baker, Council Bock, Council Braden, Council Edwards, Council Flaherty, Council Flynn, Council Mejia. Please add the Chair's name, as well as Council Wu. And Councilors SIB George and Campbell seek suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0866. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket 0866 has been adopted. Madam Clerk, we are now moving on to personnel orders. Would you please begin with docket 0867?
Thank you. Docket 0867, Council O'Malley for Council Edward.
Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0867. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the docket is passed.
Docket 0868, Council O'Malley for Council SIB George.
Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0868. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the docket is passed.
Docket 0869.
Chair, oops, sorry.
Council O'Malley offered the following.
Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0869. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the docket is passed. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving on to late files, I am informed by Clerk Feeny that there is one late-file matter. The late-file matter is a resolution sponsored by At-Large Counsel Julia Mejia, and we are first going to take a vote to add this item to the agenda. Does everyone have a copy of this? You should have it on your desk from our city messenger. Okay, great. So all those in favor of adding this item to the agenda, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Thank you. The ayes have it, the late-file matter has been hereby added to the agenda. Madam Clerk, would you please read the first and last clause of the file, late file right into the record?
Thank you. Offered by City Council Julia Mejia in the City Council, a resolution in support of Senate Bill 891 and House Bill 1434, an act to prevent COVID-19 evictions and foreclosures and promote an equitable housing recovery. Therefore, be it resolved that the Boston City Council expresses support for Senate Bill 891 and House Bill 1434, an act to prevent COVID-19 evictions and foreclosures and promote equitable housing recovery, filed in the City Council on July 21, 2021.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Chair now recognizes the author, the At-Large Counsel from Dorchester, Council Mejia. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. We try very hard to avoid late-file matters, but given the timing of our council calendar and the upcoming decisions in the State House, it's definitely now or never situation. For those of you who have been following our journey, you know my story. I grew up in Boston, bouncing from place to place, and it wasn't until the fifth grade that I had a room that I can call my own. When I became the first person in my family to buy a house and get my mom out of Section 8, I thought I finally had a sense of security, a place that nobody could take away from me. But as we saw throughout COVID-19 pandemic, evictions and foreclosures would have become a reality for thousands of Bostonians had the state and federal government not acted quickly to put in place an eviction moratorium. The city did its part, too, putting out a rental relief fund and putting money into the hands of the people who needed it most. The pandemic did not create the housing crisis we are experiencing, but it certainly made it worse. And just because we are moving our way out of the pandemic doesn't mean that the economic situation is over. According to the Eviction Diversion Initiative, 90% of rental assistance applications are denied, and many people are still relying on unemployment just to make ends meet. We need to fight just as hard, if not harder, to make sure that we are keeping people in their homes. In the State House, an act to prevent COVID-19 evictions and foreclosure, promote an equitable housing recovery, has been introduced. We need to use our power as a city to ensure this act is passed. The people of Boston are looking to us to guarantee that they will be able to stay in their homes. I urge this body to suspend the rules and pass this important resolution.
Thank you very much, Council Mejia. Would anyone else wish to speak on this late-file resolution? Seeing and hearing none, would any councilors wish to add their name as a co-sponsor to this late-file resolution? Madam Clerk, please add Council Arroyo, Council Bock, Council Braden, Council Campbell, Council Edwards, Council Flynn. Please add the Chair, please add Council SIB George, please add Council Wu, and Council Mejia seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of this late-file resolution. Excuse me, Madam Clerk, please add Council Michael Flaherty as well. It's Council Mejia seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of this late-file resolution. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the resolution is hereby adopted. We are now moving on to the green sheets. Do any councilors wish to remove a matter from the green sheets? You may do so at this time. Seeing no takers, we're now moving on to the consent agenda. And I've been informed by Clerk Feeny that there are zero additions to the consent agenda. Well done, everybody. The Chair moves for adoption of the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the consent agenda has hereby been adopted. We are now moving on to announcements. Do any councilors wish to make an announcement? The Chair recognizes the District Counsel from Matapan, Council Andrea Campbell. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Where are you going? Oh, okay.
The floor is still yours.
Where are you going? Thank you, Council Baker, and thank you, Council O'Malley. I actually wanted to provide the council with an update on the civilian review board process, and I guess that's why Council President O'Malley is over here, because he's also going to offer some thoughts. But I'm really proud to announce that today, the council is going to be launching a public application process for our civilian review board nominees. As you all can remember, this body exhibited, I think, great courage and a commitment to police reform last year as we drafted the ordinance establishing a civilian review board. I want to thank my co-sponsors, Council Mejia and of course, Council Arroyo, for their partnership. I also want to thank, of course, each and every one of you on the body who weighed in and offered a whole host of ideas as we took this over the finish line. The civilian review board was tasked with reviewing and investigating complaints against the Boston Police Department and its employees, and was later incorporated into the ordinance establishing the Office of Police Accountability and Transparency with Mayor Walsh and with great and significant input from the members of his task force. I also want to give a special shout-out to Jabal Crawford, frankly, because this has been his issue for decades, and he also played a significant role and will continue to play a role, I think, in our process as we go forward as well. Six members by statute are appointed by the mayor from a pool of applicants recommended by civil rights advocacy groups, youth organizations, neighborhood associations, and members of the Boston community with knowledge of law enforcement. The remaining three members are appointed by the mayor from a pool of nine nominees to be submitted by the Boston City Council. I want to thank our Council President O'Malley and his team, particularly Jessica, as well as my Chief of Staff Ellie, who worked closely with, with Jessica, and Michelle from Central Staff for helping us create infrastructure and process and to help the council navigate our own process with respect to choosing these nominees. We agree that in order for this process to be successful, it is needed and must be public and transparent, whereby residents themselves who are interested in serving on the civilian review board can apply and be vetted by the council, and that the council have a voice and continue to have a voice in this process. And that is precisely what we have designed. We'll let President O'Malley, because he is going to be navigating the logistics with the administration, given his role, speak to the logistics, but it really is grounded on what we did for the Community Preservation Act. Council Flaherty and I obviously worked hand in hand to pass that legislation on the council side, but then continued to work in partnership to ensure there was a public and transparent process in order to create the committee. And we got just incredible feedback from residents about not only their ability to participate, but to apply for a position, to go through a process that was public, and to be kept informed along the way. So I want to, of course, thank President O'Malley for continuing that, not only the leadership, but also using that as a blueprint, and thank you, and that's all I have. Thank you, Council Baker.
Thank you, Council. Chair recognizes our good friend, the Council President, President O'Malley.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Just very briefly.
Hold on, I'm hap, oh, there you go.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just very briefly, obviously, tremendous thanks to, to the three co-sponsors, Council Mejia, Council Arroyo, and particularly, Council Campbell. It was about, I would say, probably six weeks or so ago where the Acting Mayor's Administration had asked for some names, the way it's written, and I said, well, I said shortly after that, we're going to follow the process that we did exceptionally well in the CPC for the Community Preservation Committee. And I actually think, if done well, and I'm, I'm fairly convinced this will. And I actually think, if done well, and I'm, I'm fairly convinced this will be done well, this is a blueprint that I hope members of this body next year adopt for other mayoral appointments. It allows for the council to collect and vet names and then present to the administration to, to select members. And I think that this is a, a unique way to do it openly, transparently, effectively. As, as Counselor Campbell sort of broke down how it's going to go, the only thing I would add, Kerry Jordan, again, thanks, he has the quick turnaround. The website will be live shortly, if it's not live already, where you can go to boston.gov/citycouncil. We urge all councilors and friends to share this direct link and application portal out so we can spread the word and assist in the outreach. The nominees will serve a term of three years, provided that the members are first appointment. Three shall be appointed for a term of one year, three shall be appointed for, appointed to a term of two years, three shall be appointed for a term of three years. And of course, I think the other unique situation here is I believe that these terms will be coterminous with the mayor, much like other appointments. So we'd like to have a deadline for applications by about a month from now, Friday, August 20th, 2021, obviously. And shortly after that, we will hold a working session under the Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee, but obviously open, and we encourage all members of this body to participate. Crucially, and want to thank my colleagues who've talked, obviously, about language access, for making sure that we have available paper copies of this application portal that's translated into Chinese, Cape Verdean Creole, Haitian Creole, Spanish, as well as Vietnamese. So once again, thank you to Chair Campbell and sponsors Arroyo and Mejia for your leadership and partnership on this. Looking forward to a good, robust, transparent, and effective process. And I will then switch gears shortly to, again, use this opportunity to thank all of my colleagues for your support and interest in the Berto 2.0. We are having our hearing tomorrow at 3:00. It will be virtually, and of course, Government Operations Committee, please participate if you can. This is something that obviously is very important to all of us, and I want to make sure that we can do this also well, quickly and effectively. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chair recognizes Counselor Arroyo.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to also thank Counselor Campbell for her leadership on ensuring that OPAT made it through. I think the marriage of what came out of both the task force and this council made it a stronger document, and I look forward to seeing folks actually be on this board. This is something folks have been angling for, for decades now. And so if you are somebody who's watching this, who shares the goals of ensuring that police are engaging with community in a way that is transparent and that there's an accountability step point to that, but also that we are shaping and messaging the ways in which we would like policing to engage in our communities, that I think this is a perfect opportunity for you to apply and be part of that. I want to shift gears a little bit from something like that to something like this, which is we are having, Riverside Theater Works in my district is having every Tuesday, summer concert series from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. at the Martini Half Shell off of Truman Parkway. It's already, Truman Highway. It's already happened twice, so we've already had two dates, so the next two are this coming Tuesday and the Tuesday after that. And I would invite folks to come join. Riverside Theater Works is a really great organization, so this is in Hyde Park off of, at the Martini Half Shell off of Truman Parkway, Truman Highway, sorry. And so that's from 6:30 to 8:00, so if folks want to come in and say hi and meet some of the residents of the city in Hyde Park, that's a great opportunity to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Arroyo. The Chair now recognizes the at-large counsel from Dorchester, Counselor Mejia. The floor is yours.
Counselor Bach was before.
All right, the Chair, the Chair now recognizes Counselor Kenzie Bach, the District Counsel from Beacon Hill.
Thank you, Mr. President. And continuing on the theater theme, I just wanted to draw the council and the city's attention to the fact that tonight is the first performance of Commonwealth Shakespeare back on the Boston Common. We didn't have it last year. It's been going for 25 years. I actually attended the first performance when I was seven, and it's been a big family tradition of ours to bring a picnic blanket and some food and snag a spot and watch it every year. And so very excited about it. Opening tonight, the show this year is The Tempest. It's, it's free, you know, there are some seats in the front that you can pay for to support the theater company, Commonwealth Shakespeare, but there's plenty of space for, like I said, picnic blankets, and folks are spread out. And it should be great. It's every night at 8:00 p.m. except for Mondays from now to August 8th. So if councilors have a moment to stop by and see it, great. But for anybody watching this at home, it's going to be a fantastic production, and to me, it's just another harbinger of the fact that our world is, is hopefully reopening and continuing to do so. And it's, it's just a very special cultural event in the life of the City of Boston every summer. So tonight, 8:00 p.m., The Tempest.
Thank you. You know, Counselor Bach, I attended the first opening 25 years ago as well, as You Like It, and Steve Mailer was the director. We weren't together. I was older than seven, but my former, my former boss, for whom I interned on this body, Peggy Davis Mullen, was the driving force behind that. So thank you for that memory. Thank you. And Clerk Feeny was very supportive as well, then. Thanks, right. The Chair now recognizes Counselor Julia Mejia.
God, and I've never been, and I grew up here in Boston, so I'm going to have to get out there and participate at some point. So I just wanted to, to Counselor Campbell, just wanted to, just in regards to the civilian review board, as you know, we fought really hard around the youth component piece of it. So just really making sure as we start thinking about this process, I'm eager to know what the dynamics are going to be for that youth representative voice in that space and to ensure that some of the folks are included in that conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mejia. Chair now recognizes the District Counselor from Austin-Brighton, Counselor Braden. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want us to adjourn today in memory of Frank J. Strank Jr. He passed away on Saturday, July 10th, at the age of 77. It's not exactly a household name, but Frank was, is a massive loss for the Boston music community. He was a champion and ardent supporter of those who sought to make music in Boston's music culture. As you know, Austin is known as Rock City, and due to its history, because of its history, have been an incubator for new and emerging bands and over many decades. And the music scene was cultivated in the, in the context of many small music venues. And frankly, had a successful career in the beverage and entertainment business as the longtime owner of O'Brien's Pub, and his 44-year careers as an owner of Great Scott in Austin. Both of his, these were beloved venues, and Frank considered Great Scott as his home base. So his passing marks the end of an era, but it's hopeful, we're hopeful that Great Scott will live on in a new venue, which is the Austin Depot. You see it on the牌 as you're coming in. It used to be Regina Pizza. We're hoping that it will take on a new life and reemerge post-COVID as a really dynamic music venue for the music scene in Austin. So Frank was a larger-than-life character and represented a lot of what was good and wonderful about the Austin music scene, and he will be greatly missed. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Counselor Braden. And we will be, among the people for whom we will adjourn this memory will be Francis Frank Strank, is the last name?
Strank.
Strank, thank you. Chair now recognizes the at-large counsel from South Boston, Counselor Michael Flaherty.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of Counselor Baker and Counselor Asabi George and all the councilors, I would just like to adjourn in memory of Paul Hacker Quinn, who passed away suddenly. We know Allison, Allison works for Mayor Walsh, but the Quinn family, actually Hacker grew up with my mother back in the day, and so retired police officer and died suddenly. So I thought some prayers were with the Quinn family.
Paul Hacker Quinn, Q-U-I-N-N? Thank you. And that was, I'm sorry, Counselor Flaherty, that was on behalf of yourself, Counselor Baker.
Counselor Asabi George. In the council.
And the entire council. Thank you. Any further announcements? Seeing and hearing none, we are now going to move on to memorials. Today, we will adjourn our meeting in memory of the following individuals. For Counselor Braden, Francis Frank Strank. For Counselor Campbell, Linda McDonald, Benny Hicks, John Walsh, Desiree Cooper, and Henry Share, Counselor Campbell's father-in-law. For Councilors Flynn, Flaherty, and Baker, Cheryl Simpson. For Counselor Flynn, Gary Daniel Wilson. For Councilors Flynn and Flaherty, Paul Manning. For Counselor Flynn, Simon Chan. For Counselor Flaherty, Baker and Asabi George, Paul Hacker Quinn. A moment of silence, please. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. We are scheduled to meet again in the IONELA Chamber on Wednesday, August 18th, at 12:00 noon. All in favor of adjournment, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The council is hereby adjourned.
I'm so sorry. I've been sick. We'll talk later.